For the pledge of allegiance in the.
Stand.
My pledge of allegiance is as like of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Follow me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for everything that you have given us. We especially thank you for the rain on Friday. We also thank you for the football season. Lord, we just ask that you take care of those playing, take care of those trainers, be with the EMS team on fields, Lord, and be with our hospitals as well, be with EMS teams and the fire station. Lord, we just ask that you protect us and guide us throughout the days coming, Lord, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, the in-basin he changes to the minutes, then he'd be corrected. All right, they will stand as presented. Next, we have public comment. And this is time for the public to bring up anything that is not on the agenda. Please ask that you limit yourself to five minutes, and if you do come up, please state your name. Is there anybody in public? At least one.
All right, Nate the Heck, I pastor of Turning Point Church in the classroom.
Hello.
Ministry of Alliance, and just want to let you guys know, on Sunday afternoon, as part of a nine eleven remembrance service, starting at four P M. at Stevens Park, just want to invite you guys to be a part of that. It's going to go for a couple hours, have a lot of different things planned. Just wanted to make sure that the public knows about that as well. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve request from Connie Bugar, executive director at Western Kansas Community Foundation, to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of September ninth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, as welcoming week in Garden City, Kansas.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and I believe we'll have Matt read it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Whereas Garden City, Kansas is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who were not born in Garden City, in Kansas, or in the United States, but now called Garden City home. And whereas Garden City's success depends on ensuring all residents feel welcome. And whereas, new residents play a vital role in our community by bringing new ideas, starting businesses, serving in civic roles, working in critical industries, and contributing to the vibrant diversity we value. And whereas, to receive the maximum social and economic benefits of a diverse community, Garden Cityans must strive to create public spaces and consider public policy that addresses disparities, counters hate, understands history, and helps neighbors come together. And whereas, regardless of immigration status, race, ethnicity, place of origin, English language proficiency, religion, income, gender, sexual orientation, differing abilities, age, and other factors, we come together as neighbors for our current collective health, economic prosperity, and well-being, and to enhance the lives of future generations of Garden Cityans. Now, therefore, I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim September ninth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, as welcoming week in the city of Garden City, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to reach across the lines of differences and partake in all in making the region a more welcoming place for new and long-term residents alike. Signed and sealed, sealed this sixth day.
All right. Do we have anybody here to? Do you want to say any words, or I can take a picture, or both?
I can say a word.
Okay. Okay.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm the city of the city of the National Commission. We from the Western Kansas Community Foundation are very proud of you for taking the ball roll as a local government to say that our city is a home and welcoming to people regardless of their backgrounds, that collectively, we can encourage new Garden City citizens to find their roots here to make this a rich place for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve request from Finney County Humane Society to allow the mayor to proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as Vincent Mancini Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and I believe that will be read at a different time. So we'll do that then.
Yeah. Congratulations, Vince. Item six C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Angelica Castillo Chapel on behalf of the Community Mexican Fiesta Association to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of September, twenty twenty-two, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Garden City, Kansas.
I move that we approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and I believe this will be read at a later time. I could probably guess what that later time is going to be. It should probably be Community Mexican Fiesta.
Saturday.
Saturday. All right.
Item six D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from Leave a Legacy Foundation for the twenty twenty-two Leave a Legacy five K walk run. These requests include a waiver of fees associated with the closure of public vehicle access to Lee Richardson Zoo from eight A M. to eleven A M., and a waiver of fees associated with hanging banners on the zoo fence facing Main Street and St. Catherine Hospital. And these requests are consistent with previous years.
I can also answer any questions if you have.
I'll make a motion. We approve the request as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Do you want to say just a quick one-minute Leave a Legacy blurb?
Your assumption is we aren't.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Items seven A through D are all staff reports. If you have questions on any of those, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Item E is an obligatory report from Cox Communications regarding channel lineup changes consistent with their franchise. Item eight, the meetings of note, you'll see a list of of events in September. Any of those requiring R S V Ps, please do those through the city clerk's office. And item nine A is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number twenty-five sixty-two dash twenty twenty-two A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number twenty-five sixty-two dash twenty twenty-two A.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item ten A has a scheduled public hearing time, so we can move to item B. This is probably going to, no, item B's got a scheduled public hearing time. This is going to mess us up on our resolution number show. Yep, okay. Bear with me. Item item ten C, mayor, if that's okay?
Yep.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase Two, and if approved, it would be resolution number twenty-nine thirty-four dash twenty twenty-two. Trent.
McKinsey. And Trent.
Oh, I'm sorry, McKinsey.
Okay. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase Two. As required by R H I D statute, this resolution, excuse me, establishes a date and time for the public hearing at which the development plan and an ordinance establishing the Hunter's Glen Phase Two R H I D will be considered. The date and time proposed in the resolution are October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, at one thirty P M. A preliminary copy of the development plan to be considered at the time is included with this memo for your review. This area has been approved by the State of Kansas to be included in the R H I D program. This resolution is the second step. The commission needs to establish the R H I D district for Hunter's Glen Phase Two. So Hunter's Glen Phase Two is generally located at thirty-three hundred North Third Street. The developer, Oikos Development, intends to provide lots to build multiple family homes consisting of duplexes and fourplexes. The development will consist of thirty lots containing five duplexes and twenty-five fourplexes. So there are two alternatives before you today. The first is the governing body may approve the attached resolution, and the second is the governing body may not approve the attached resolution, and staff recommends alternative one.
All right. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty-nine thirty-four dash twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thanks, McKinsey.
Thanks, McKinsey. Item item D, oh, okay, pardon me. Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance regarding improvements to third fire station facilities, and if approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine thirty-three dash twenty twenty-two.
And note that Manny stepped down, or Commissioner Ortiz stepped down.
Jared?
Good afternoon. In twenty seventeen, voters approved the point three zero county sales tax authorizing specific projects to complete the funds raised from the tax, including those projects to prepare the fire station. The estimated cost of construction of the third fire station is approximately twelve million dollars, and the estimated cost of the fire apparatus and relevant equipment for the third fire station is approximately four point five million dollars. The first step in the process to issue debt to approve is to approve an ordinance to authorize the project. The authority for this authorization is case eight twelve dash seven thirty-six, as known as the Public Building Act. Using this authority allows the city to acquire and construct, make repairs, reconstruct, remodel, replace, make additions to furnish or equip any public building and to issue general obligation bonds of the city for certain purposes. This project of approval will be part of the twenty twenty-two general obligation bond issue. This ordinance authorizing the project would allow for bonds to be issued up to sixteen point five million dollars, not including cost of issuing the bonds. If the governing body elected to issue bonds to cover the cost of the construction of the fire station and necessary apparatus and equipment, the full sixteen million five hundred thousand would be issued. If the governing body elected to issue bonds for the construction only, the city would issue bonds of approximately twelve million dollars. The debt service payments for the bonds issued will be paid using the funds collected from the point three zero sales tax. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, there was a cash balance in the sales tax project fund of approximately three point six million dollars. The city anticipates cost remaining of approximately six nine thousand for the Jimmy Barker Road project and approximately ninety thousand for the Kenridge project. The city will also be transferring approximately three hundred thirteen thousand from the sales tax project fund to the general fund in twenty twenty-two to reimburse the operational costs experienced in preparation for the third fire station. The city also anticipates collecting approximately one point five million dollars in revenue from the point three sales tax between June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. This will leave a cash balance of approximately four million ninety-five thousand at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Included in that cash balance is four million dollars of internal borrowing, which was completed to allow the project to remain on schedule and not be delayed due to not having accumulated the upfront cash necessary. At this time, the governing body can like to utilize the cash balance of the fund to pay for the cost of some of the apparatus equipment and diminish the total amount financed through Geo Bonds, though this will prolong the time needed for the internal borrowing to be repaid. If the full sixteen million five hundred thousand is approved for the Geo Bond financing, it would be estimated that the internal borrowing would be able to be paid back over the next few years, and the annual collections would be sufficient to cover the annual debt service and anticipated operational costs. If the apparatus and equipment are paid utilizing the current cash balance of the fund, it would be estimated that the internal borrowing would not be repaid until closer to January. There's some attachments as well that you have, which show a little bit of a breakout of the timing of whether we went with paying for those using that cash balance account. In a nutshell, the cash balance we have is that the internal borrowing, so if we choose to utilize that to continue to pay for the apparatus, it's going to be close to the end of the whole term of this project before that internal borrowing is done. That will lean on the cash position of the city, whereas if you finance the full amount, you would know what the debt service is, you'd have a schedule, you'd be able to accommodate from a budget standpoint very easily what exactly are going to be for that time. The options today are to adopt ordinance as presented and provide staff with direction regarding the total amount of funds desired from the Geo Bond issuance, or defer this to a later date. And staff's recommendation is to adopt the ordinance authorizing the project to be included in the twenty twenty-two general obligation bond issue. From a fiscal note, debt service payers for this project are estimated to be approximately two million thirty-five thousand per year for ten years if the full sixteen point five issued, or one million four hundred eighty thousand per year for ten years if we go with the twelve million dollars for the construction, and both will be funded from the sales tax project fund with that collections from the point three zero sales tax. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So is there any penalty if we, if sales tax increase or trending upward as they currently are, is there any penalty for paying off the bonds early?
Close to there would not be a penalty of paying them off early if we did have those excess costs. We've budgeted, we anticipate, and provided previously a breakout of our expected operational costs, and they'll end up being approximately a million dollars a year that the general fund will pay and that this fund will reimburse. If those costs increase because of higher costs on equipment or things like that, that can be the fluctuating number. The debt service would be pretty, pretty well scheduled, but that, there is an option where if we did collect extra revenues above what we anticipate, we could pay off the obligation early.
Any other questions?
I don't think there's any advantage in not.
I don't either.
Yeah, I recommend that we adopt the ordinance as presented and basically finance the total amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Sixteen million.
Sixteen million, sixteen million. I'm sorry, could we get a, could we get a fire engine for sixteen thousand, for sixteen million five hundred thousand?
All right, there's a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented, and look at the total amount of sixty million five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Jared.
Item E, the governing body is asked to.
Hold on just a minute for Manny, having Commissioner Ortiz.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution that would abate a alleged violation at twenty-three fifteen Tonio Avenue, a red vehicle and blue S U V. Trent.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, the Maxwell Director of Neighborhood and Development Services is coming for you today with this environmental nuisance. We have one red vehicle and one blue S U V located at twenty-three fifteen Tonio Avenue. The property has been sent to multiple letters. The dates of those letters or violations were sent on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. According to the thirty-eight one thirty-seven of the Environmental Code ordinances, neither have been evaded, and the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on the property. Alternatives are alternative number one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or in pursuit, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative one, and any fees charged against or for this payment will be charged against the partial or the law.
And if approved, this would be resolution number twenty-nine thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which would abate a condition at thirteen oh nine Heinemann Drive. If approved, this would be ordinance twenty-nine thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two.
Mayor, commissioners, without further comments, I'll try to get through them. This is a study for inoperable vehicle. We have one blue S U V and one green S U V located at thirty-nine Heinemann Drive. So there's two vehicles on this property, violation, excuse me, violation matters were sent on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and August third of twenty twenty-two. Neither have been evaded nor have they requested a hearing from the governing body. Alternatives are number one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, and number two, not approve the attached resolution, we recommend to staff as alternative number one, and any fees assessed or occurred for this payment will be charged to law or partial.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-nine thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which would abate a condition at nine fourteen North Ninth Street. If approved, this would be resolution number twenty-nine thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two.
So we have a single vehicle, a red vehicle located at nine fourteen North Nin. Our letters were sent out violation on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Neither has the nuisance been evaded or not requested before the governing body for the hearing. Alternatives number one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative number one, and any costs incurred will be assessed to law or partial.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, which have passed, would abate a condition at three oh three North Second Street. If approved, this is resolution number twenty-nine thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two.
Okay, mayor, commissioners, we've got a few different items. We have some woods, some guttering, shopping carts, barrow branches, a washing machine, windows, a rolling chair, exercise bike. These items are in violation of our environmental nuisance code. The letters of violation were sent out on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and July sixth of twenty twenty-two. Nothing had been evaded nor had they requested a hearing before the governing body. Alternatives, the governing body may approve the attached resolution for number one. Number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative number one, and fiscal note, if any costs incurred by the city will be assessed to law or partial.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Trent.
We cannot take up twelve A until we handle the corresponding item that's at the one thirty public hearing, so if we have a little bit of time, we can do twelve B if that's okay.
Yep.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a memorandum of understanding between the Garden City Fire Department and Kansas Forestry Service for a wildland task force team. Chief?
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners.
Hello.
In the event of a large grass fire, the Garden City Fire Department has minimal resources to many of these fires. By signing the memorandum of understanding with Kansas Forestry Service, the Garden City Fire Department personnel will access their resources and assets and training from the Kansas Forestry Service. During the Fort Horse Fire, we had Kansas Forestry on scene, and they proved to be vital with access to contacts that provided air drops on the fires, allowing fire personnel to focus on structural protection. They also attended the debriefing afterwards and provided training and guidance over guidelines to receive reimbursement in the future. By entering into the partnership, Garden City Fire Department will be able to roster a wildland task force team that can be deployed at the state and national levels. During deployment, Garden City Fire Department will be compensated for personnel backup, apparatus used, travel time, lodging, maintenance mileage. And the Kansas Forestry Service will also provide wildlife department trained and prior personnel over wildland fire personnel protective equipment, as well as educational programs to create awareness in the public. Alternatives authorized by our chief design memorandum of understanding with Kansas Forestry Service on behalf of the Garden City Fire Department. Alternative two, not allow the fire chief to sign a memorandum of understanding and all the guidance. Staff recommends alternative.
I'll make a motion. We approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a little bit in your draft that you had Tyree Kill listed in there, but he's no longer with the team, so why would you list him? I'm kidding. I'm sure he could probably be cut from staff, so he's, yeah, no, I appreciate all the information in there that listed all the breakouts of the costs and stuff that we got, but that's kind of where I read. If you guys don't know, it was listed as Travis Kelsey and Patrick Mahomes on, on that draft, so it's just compensation for that, but yeah, I appreciate all that info in there. Thanks. It's a fun read.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve applying to the Kansas Department of Transportation Falk twenty twenty-two cost share program. Mike? Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Back on August 15th of 2022, city staff through the Wilson and Company, our on-site engineering firm, we sent notification to Kansas Department of Transportation that the city, Garden City, was planning to apply for the Federal Highway Administration's Safe Streets for All Grant, which is reference as SS4A grant. KDOT is encouraging cities, counties, and local entities to submit a grant application for this 2022 SS4A, which is a new federal highway discretionary grant program. The SS4A program and the new Kansas SS4A match pilot program represent an opportunity to leverage federal and state funding to create safety plans for city streets and county roads. The objective of the SS4A is to reduce the number of fatal and serious injury crashes on local roadways through regional collaboration. The Kansas SS4A match pilot program has been authorized for one year and provides financial assistance to local entities that apply for and receive funding for this SS4A discretionary grant program by completing the safety action plan. If you don't do the safety action plan, then you're not eligible to receive the, well, more likely won't be eligible to receive, so that's why we're bringing it to you, see if we can move forward. The state funding program, KDOT pilot program, will contribute to the local match required in the SS4A grant. We did receive notification from KDOT that they will actually, they will support 20%. So the feds will pay 80% of this cost, KDOT will pay the remaining 20%, so the potential that it would cost the city, Garden City, zero dollars in this whole thing. The eligible applicants include metropolitan planning organizations, political subdivisions of the state, federally recognized tribal governments, and multi-jurisdictional groups, including cities, towns, counties, transit authorities, created under state law. So if approved today, the governing body will, staff will submit and grant requests for Garden City, but it will also include Fenton County, Polkham, Scott County, Scott City, Liberal, Zuber County, Grant County, Hassel County, the city of Liberal as joint applicants, also possibility that the city of Oompa Loom would also want to join in on this. So basically, it's going to go from Nebraska line to the Oklahoma line on Highway 83 corridor and bring attention to the need for improvements along that road and in addition, just what we need in Garden City. So the alternatives are approve staff, authorize staff to submit this SS4A grant application or do not authorize us to do so. We recommend alternative number one, and there's no, there's no financial obligation to submit the grant. Sure, their numbers change somewhere along the way at work, except we would certainly bring that back to the commission for consideration. Happy to answer any questions. Let's try to pass.
I'll make a motion, we approve the staff to submit the SS4A grant as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Thanks, Mike. And it is 1:30.
Mayor Commissioners, item 10A on the agenda is a public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate and the approval of the 2023 budget. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And if approved, the resolution would be 2939-2022. Jared? And I think it'd be appropriate to open the public hearing.
Before Jared?
Yep.
All right, I'll open the public meeting then. Is there any, we'll go with Jared and then comments? Okay.
So the July 15th, 2022 city commission meeting, governing body authorized the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate to exceed the calculated revenue neutral rate. The 2023 city budget was approved for application at the August 2nd, 2022 meeting with a rate of 38.512 milliliters. The revenue neutral rate for 2023 is 34.486 milliliters. This resolution would formally acknowledge that the city is exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So after discussion or public input, the alternatives would be for the governing body to approve the resolution as presented, and that approval must be done and completed by a roll call vote, or the governing body may not approve the resolution and lower the city's levy rate to equal that of the revenue neutral rate. Staff recommendation would be to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public meeting. All right. Any discussion before we take a roll call vote for this?
Does somebody need to make the motion and then we do the voting?
Yep.
I move to approve resolution number?
No.
No?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry.
I was like, am I looking at a different? 2939-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, and then will you direct this roll call vote?
Yes, yes, Mayor. So the roll call vote, I will ask each of you individually for your yea or nay vote. I did do it alphabetically, so Commissioner Cessna?
Aye.
Mayor Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
Yeah, after all the work on the budget, I mean, I just.
It's good.
That's good. So we need a jump past?
The next item would be, would be 12A, which is the consideration of the budget and the public hearing you had just also satisfied the public hearing requirement for the budget. Jared?
Following this public hearing, the certificate for the 2023 budget is prepared using the notice of hearing for the 2023 budget expenditures. Prior to approving the budget certificate, the governing body approved a resolution to exceed revenue neutral rate. This allows us to see the levy of property tax rate of 38.512 mils that will generate a parcel of $9,697,333. The alternatives now are to approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented. Approve and sign a certificate of budget that is different from what is presented. However, Kansas statutes prohibit the changes resulting in raising the city's total levy from what was published in the notice of public hearing, or do not approve the certificate of budget. Staff confirmation, it is time to approve this and signing of the certificate of budget as presented. If there's any questions, anything included in that, I'd be happy to answer them.
You have a motion?
I move to approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
And I believe we skipped 12C.
Yep.
Well, my apologies. We read 12C, did we discuss 12D?
No, we read 12D. We just need to go back to 12C.
All right. 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve applying to the Kansas Department of Transportation Fall 2022 Cost Share Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. At the September 21st, 2021 meeting, the governing body approved the application to the KDOT Department of Transportation for the Fall 2021 Cost Share Program. Staff submitted the application for significant pedestrian walkway pathway extensions east from Towne Trail across USAD 450 bypass to Jamie Barker Road, and then a continued of Jamie Barker Road that ties into the Chapel Heights subdivision and where the traffic signals will be at the intersection of Jamie Barker and 156. However, the city was not selected for that, as a recipient of that 2021 program. KDOT has since opened up its Fall 2022 Cost Share Program, and the governing body so desires, staff would submit an updated Cost Share Program application. The updated application would include all of the various improvements that we just discussed that was in the Fall 2021 application. In addition, there'll be two pedestrian bridges that are designed by Wilson and Company. With the improvements of the 2021 application and the bridges included, the estimated amount is $3,655,000, with KDOT paying $1.5 million of that, leaving Garden City's portion to be $2,155,000. The alternatives are to direct staff to apply to the KDOT Fall 2022 Cost Share Program in the amount not to exceed $3,655,000, or alternative two is to not authorize staff or direct staff to apply for that 2022 Cost Share Program. Staff recommends alternative one. And the total estimated cost of the projects would be the city paying for anything over what KDOT wouldn't pay for of the $1.5 million, our cost would be $2,155,000. And if approved, then the staff would recommend using the city's GO moms are working with the finance department on how that may come about, but we will probably tell you, you know, whether we see the grant application or not, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So with the grant application, so they can award up to that, or they can award any amount or up to that amount, is that correct?
They'll award up to, I believe it's $4 million per application, or they only pay $1.5 million towards any, so, or the city has to provide 15% up to that maximum of $1.5.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the application for the 2022 Cost Share Program for up to $3.655 million.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second.
The only question I was going to ask was, were there any changes to your previous application or any updates that you had to make for this application?
The only thing we changed, Commissioner, was we added the two pedestrian bridges across, one across DB1, kind of, I want to say these big water tanks over off the shoulder.
Yeah, I thought that was.
And smaller bridge on DB2, which is up by, closer to Chapel Heights, that'll connect those two pedestrians traffic ever.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Thanks, Mike.
Item E. The governing body is asked to provide guidance on next steps regarding future use of the State Theater. Daniel?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As we briefly mentioned this morning, one of your goals, obviously, as you know, is to explore options to utilize the State Theater. So last week, we received some interest, or potential interest in that property, and so we wanted to come before you all to seek some further direction in terms of how you would like to proceed with that property. So we've outlined a couple of different options for you all to consider so that as staff can go back and kind of bring forward some next steps. So one of those would be to direct staff to develop, to develop and release requests for proposal related to that facility. Another one would be to simply list that facility for sale and see what offers we may foresee for it. The third alternative is to bring back some proposal to you all to consider rehabilitation of that property for public use. And then obviously, option four would be to do nothing. Because we did get some interest in that facility, staff is recommending either alternative one, two, or three, and would be happy to seek any direction that you all may have.
When you talk about interest, are you talking about purchase of the property or with improvements that we would need to make for it, bring it up to code, or?
So we received kind of a general statement of interest related to purchase, purchasing that property to rehabilitate it into a different use. So that's why we wanted to bring back this to you all to kind of figure out if you're interested in going down that path. If you wanted us to be more specific and do kind of a formal RFP, which I believe has been done in the past, that kind of delineates kind of what our city expectations would be in terms of what that would need to kind of be rehabilitated. So a couple of different options for you all to consider in terms of what you would like to see for that facility.
Is the management of that property still under the rec commission or the Park and Recs Department still, or is it just kind of, is it just sit there, or is it?
I would say collectively, it's under the control of the city.
Of the city.
It isn't necessarily going to be under one department or another because it's kind of an economic development type item, that's why I'm before you with this item. If it was, if we were making a proposal for you all to consider for it to be a recreation facility, then we'd probably be up here talking to you about that.
And I know we obtained this through the addition of the rec, and they got this from a donation at that time. But at that time, I think our offerings of the rec was a little bit different. So I don't know, how long have we had this in either the rec commission or the city rec commission? How long have we had that under our possession?
I do not know, but I can certainly get that information to you unless Aaron, you have an idea?
I think it's more than five years, at least.
I think it's been more than five years.
Yeah, it was in the rec commission's possession before I got here, it was 2016. I speculate it was like 2012, 2014 when, I believe, Wayne West purchased it from the city and donated it to the rec commission.
I think that sounds about right.
Because the thing about like sale, so we sold that piece of property on Kansas Avenue, which is supposed to be developed, and nothing's really happened to it. So I mean, the problem with if we put any contingencies on a sale, but you certainly don't want it to not be kept updated and, you know, because it does impact the look of our downtown. So that's the hard thing, I mean, that's the only question to have, is how would you make sure that if it's sold and it's purchased, that something would go through? Because again, the piece of property on Kansas Avenue has been sold twice, I think, and nothing's still happened with that over there. It's off near Third Street, the corner of Third Street and Kansas Avenue.
Right.
So that would be my only concern with, you know, how long do you hold it for someone to do something with it? So I mean, I would love to see it returned back to the property tax role, but I just, what that would look like, I don't really know.
Well, I don't think there's any action that the commissioner or the staff could take that would make sure it would develop.
Right.
Similar to what we've done on Kansas Avenue, you could take an action, you could include an action where if there weren't activity, that you would come back into ownership of it, which is what we have in place and the commission's granted extensions for on Kansas Avenue. When the city parted with this property the most recent time, it wasn't conditioned, there wasn't a, there wasn't a clawback when we sold it to the Recreation Commission. Now inherently, we ended up with it again because, for a fourth time, when the, when the agencies consolidated. And I think that's probably one of the distinguishing factors between number one and number two. Number two, you'd put it up for sale and you'd just sell it. Number one, the request for proposal wouldn't have to have a clawback in it, but the ones we've done to date have all included that, whether it was the State Theater, the Armory, a remnant piece of property like the one on Kansas Avenue.
I don't personally have any will to do rehabilitation from the city side.
I don't either.
Of things, so if there is somebody who is willing to take that on, I believe that's a good thing. And then kind of, we were saying, the difference between RFP and a for sale is, one is we're trying to maximize the use of the property, one we're trying to maximize the value that you get monetarily. I think monetarily, there's not going to be that much difference between a high and a low bid, but.
And I think.
RFP, there could be a difference between different proposals and what they want to do and that vision.
Yeah, that's what I think too. I think it makes people aware that it's up for sale or that it's, the ability to have it to use would be, that's the only difference with the RFP, so.
I'll make a motion that we develop and release a request for proposal on this item.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you. Good luck.
Item F. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the, to the development agreement for Pheasant Valley Third Edition, first replat Phase One to allow a six-month extension to commence construction to provide both a surety and maintenance bond for only the future public improvements, and to provide for the simultaneous construction of buildings and infrastructure improvements. Trent?
Mayor Commissioners, so this is an amendment to the current development agreement that is already out there. It's to, one, grant an extension of time so they can get started on construction. They want to start pulling building permits, so that last little part that you have before you, a printed document, is to put in that language, which is what we've done with other subdivisions. We've had a lot of interest, and once they're able to start breaking ground on homes and it's responsible, we have elevations or curb and guttering, we've allowed it, and it's reflected that in the development agreement. So before you, we do have that language in there, that they can start the construction of homes at the same time as doing those couple improvements that are left open from where they stopped last time. Could go through some more of that detail. For Phase One, it consists of 17 lots, residential homes. A lot, a lot will be reserved as a private park space to be maintained by homeowners association. Credit is provided for the private park and cash flow fee for parks, open space in recreation areas. A portion of Orchard Lane will be vacated and used as a utility easement and drainage tract. The developer will, will be doing infrastructure improvements that consist of, but are not limited to extending electrical, water, sanitary sewer, installing sidewalks, and streetlights. Alternatives before you today, number one, the governing body may approve the amendment to the development agreement as presented. Number two, the governing body may approve the amendment to the development agreement with changes. And number three, the governing body may not approve the amendment to the development agreement. Staff recommends alternative number one. There's no fiscal note at this time, and the developer will fund the project through private financing. Have any questions, I'll do my best answer.
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment to the development agreement as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Thank you.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a proposal for an enterprise resource planning software solution from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $1,179,629. Derek?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Since 2003, the city has utilized MIP Fund Accounting Software as our core ERP application. The city also utilizes several additional software applications, some developed in-house and others provided through a variety of software vendors. Due to the use of these different systems, all applications are not fully integrated, and the city must maintain multiple systems to meet our intended business objectives. Many of these systems are becoming outdated and hard to maintain. This creates many unnecessary workflows that are time consuming and keep staff from being more efficient. After months of research and reference checks, staff identified Tyler Technologies, Open Gov, Net at Work, and Oracle Corporation as potential vendors for an enterprise resource planning software solution. At the June 21st, 2022 commission. At the June 21, 2022 commission meeting, the governing body approved the release of an RFP soliciting proposals for an ERP software solution. Staff received one proposal from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $1,179,629, which includes implementation with estimated travel costs for their integration team, financial management software module, a human capital management software module with a payroll software module, and a software as a solution SaaS three-year term. So after three years, there is a reoccurring software maintenance fee of $241,723, which will be incorporated into the budget at that time. Now, for those that don't understand what SaaS is, SaaS is software as a service. So it's a way of delivering applications over the internet. So it's a method of service delivery, of software delivery and licensing in which software is accessed online via subscription rather than bought and installed on individual computers. So it's freeing ourselves from complex software and hardware management. So, other optional costs for additional services are included in Tyler's proposal, and staff will evaluate these throughout the implementation process. If additional services are desired, staff will bring recommendations to the City Commission for consideration. Staff contacted eight different municipalities for reference checks on Tyler Technologies, as well as visited the cities of Hudson and Winfield to see the Tyler software package performed in person. So staff identified Tyler's financial, human capital management, and payroll software modules as excellent. However, there were concerns regarding Tyler's utility billing software module, the key driver being its inability to fully integrate with our new AMI metering system. So staff is currently researching Core and Main's utility billing software package. And Core and Main is the provider of our AMI metering system, and that will integrate fully into the Tyler Technologies ERP software solution. So, at a later date, staff will bring a recommendation to the governing body for a utility billing software package. Now, staff has put together three alternatives for you guys to choose from. Alternative number one would be to approve the proposal from Tyler Technologies for the amount of $1,179,629, with a do not exceed amount of 1.6 million in the event staff decides to purchase additional services. Alternative number two would be to deny the proposal from Tyler Technologies, and number three would be to give staff further direction. A selection committee was formed comprising of staff members from public utilities, service and finance, utility billing, information technology, administration, and the City Commission. The committee's recommendation is to approve alternative number one, and the fiscal note is the revised 2022 and proposed 2023 budget has 2 million budgeted for this project. Funding is coming from use tax collections significantly above what was initially projected. This has allowed the city to move forward on this project quicker than what was initially anticipated. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just had one on this, on SaaS, recurring after the three years of that expense. Is that a yearly after that, or is that?
Yes, every year.
Okay.
yearly after that. So we're hoping to pay for the first three years out of that 2 million and possibly a fourth if there's leftover funds.
When you have a do not exceed amount of 1.6 million, that's about 400,000 more, what kind of additional purchases do you think would fill in that?
So, it won't be nearly that much. It'd be for maybe more man-hours for the integration team, implementation team, travel time, costs like that, possibly a barcode reader, scanners, Mac Street readers. It wouldn't be anywhere near, we don't anticipate anywhere near that 1.6. We just want to make sure we got it covered.
Any other discussion?
I move to approve the proposal from Tyler Technologies for the amount of 1.1,179,629, with a do not exceed amount of 1.6 million in the event staff decides to purchase the additional services.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any final discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Derek.
Item H. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Great Plains Development, Inc. for the city membership and participation in the amount of $4,050.
It's Jared.
Jared.
See, Lynn and I were deciding who was going to throw you off by presenting. The governing body approved the 2019 membership induced Great Plains Development, Inc. for $3,750 amount for each year. This amount has gone up. This is a renewal of our annual cost. This was not presented last year, but looking back at history, this has been something that's been presented to the commission every year. And so this is ongoing service that they provide. If you remember back with COVID and CARES, there was the CDBG grants. They monitored a lot of these loans that we had, and they're doing so now. Most of those will be wrapped up here in the next calendar year, but this is for the ongoing membership and the regular service which we, which they provide, not the CDBG additional costs from those grants. And the alternatives at this time are to approve the membership agreement and pay $4,050 the membership fee, approve the membership agreement, pay the minimum amount of $810 membership fee, or do not approve the membership agreement. Staff recommends the governing body approval of the membership agreement and pay the $4,050 for this calendar year. And if approved, this item is budgeted from the general fund, miscellaneous under the capital improvement fund.
All right. Yeah.
Do you want me to take a minute here and kind of run you through a little bit of a recap here?
I can, I can give you four minutes before we have a two o'clock public hearing.
Okay.
And then we can resume afterwards if it takes longer than four minutes.
That will, whatever works.
All right. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. So you want?
Sure.
Shall we wait until?
Well, no, let's, let's go ahead and get started, and then we'll just take a break at two o'clock. I'll let you know. I'll, I'll do something.
Do the, do the cell phone alarm on me.
There you go.
For those of you that may not know me, my name is Bob Wetmore, and I'm executive co-director of Great Plains Development in Dodge City. And I have a co-director. Her name is Fay Trent. Some of you may know Fay, or you may know me, or you may know both of us, but we've been really busy since COVID, as you probably know, so, and maybe we should wait a minute or two for the public hearing because we've actually got a little bit to cover here. We wear two hats. One is loans, and one is CDBG grants. So, based on the time, we've got three minutes. Let's see what we can cover in three minutes.
And then after that, come back, so.
If you want to flip to the buff page in there very quickly, we've had 12 loan inquiries, two CDBG RLF loans. Currently, we're working on four loan projects. We continue to work with Finney County Economic Development. Obviously, the majority of our loan leads come through them, and we really appreciate our partnership with them. We have 17 of those CDBG emergency loans that actually came through, and after the public hearing, I might actually bring you back to how we're doing on some of those payments too. So, there at the top, you can actually see you've got 325, 333 left in the revolving loan fund. And we try very hard to focus on that loan fund first. Banks come first, but then if we have an opportunity, that's usually the first loan fund that we actually try to use, knowing that we have low to moderate income requirements, a little bit of environmental requirement there, some other compliance issues that we actually watch for that. Know that inside your book, there is a giant sheet, an 11 by 17 sheet. There's an example of all the different programs that we're actually implementing right now. So, along with three Great Plains funds, we probably have a little over 50 funds that we actually help administrate throughout the 28 county region of southeast Kansas. So, we spend most of our time on the phone, talking with loan applicants, traveling over, talking to loan applicants, working with the banks. Banks come first, obviously. So, questions about the loan programs? Know that on that sheet, there's a, a number of different loan programs that are available there. Any questions or thoughts about that?
I don't, but I think that might be a good time to take a pause and pick up our two o'clock thing and go right back to you. Thanks, Bob.
Mayor and Commissioners, we've got a two o'clock public hearing scheduled for the consideration to adopt the development plan and establish the rural housing incentive district for Chapel Heights Fifth Edition by ordinance. If approved, that ordinance would be number 2934-2022. And I'll invite Trent up to talk about that. We can open up the public hearing after he's done talking.
You'll be surprised.
Good afternoon.
Hello, hey. John.
Open it now, hold on, I'm going to open it now. We'll open that two o'clock public hearing for the RHID.
As required by state statute concerning the rural housing incentive district program, the Chapel Heights Fifth Edition development comes before the governing body to adopt the attached development plan and to establish the RHID. This action is the last step to the development, this is, this action is the last, last step the development needs to take before the governing body in the RHID process. Chapel Heights Fifth Edition is generally located at the 4,400 block of Harrington Parkway. This development will consist of 82 lots in which the developer, Chapel Heights LLC, intends to provide lots to build single-family homes. According to our latest community housing assessment team study to meet our housing needs, we need to build 120 housing units per year over the next eight years, based on the current RHID feasibility, feasibility analysis from the other existing RHIDs. We predicted that, we predicted an estimated 136 houses to be built in 2021. By the end of 2020, we issued 40 certificate of occupancies and have issued 39 certificate of occupancies in 2021. In 2020, we met our housing needs by 33%. Therefore, according to our chat study and the rate of housing developments, Garden City shows a need for housing to be, to be built within this development. If the proposed ordinance is adopted, the governing bodies of the county and USD 457 will have 30 days in which to evaluate the establishment of the district. Should the governing body of either taxing subdivision determine by resolution that the district will have an adverse effect on their respective organization, the city must take action to repeal the proposed ordinance. If no such resolution is passed, passed within 30 days following the conclusion of the public hearing, then the proposed ordinance shall be in effect, and further, the district will be established and the development plan will be adopted as of the effective date of the ordinance. There are two alternatives. The governing body may approve the attached ordinance, or the governing body may not approve the attached ordinance. And staff recommends alternative one, and there is a fiscal note. The developer will be using private financing to fund the eligible cost of the RHID. The city will reimburse property tax increments to, to the developer over the life of the project, project, which could be up to 25 years. The amount of the property tax distributions cannot exceed the $3,202,192 over the life of the RHID.
All right. Is there any comment from the public on this? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions that we have?
I do show that, you said 2934, Matt? Because I had, item C was 2934. I didn't know.
It's a resolution.
Resolution, okay. So I move that we approve the attached ordinance, ordinance number 2934-2022.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you. And we're back to Bob.
You're back to Bob here. We'll try to make it quick. The packet that we gave you kind of outlines very easily all the different things that we do, when we do them, how we do them. By the way, if I haven't said this before out loud, thank you so much to city staff for the time period during COVID when we were all working like crazy to actually get some of these programs done, because it, it really worked out, and staff was very helpful at, at helping us streamline that process. So, thank you. Just so you know, on that, the remainder of that buff sheet, there are a lot of funding opportunities for small businesses. So we do get a lot of questions over time about what funds are available there. They all are. We also get a lot of questions, a second hat that we wear, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Programs. Sometimes you would think that CDBG doesn't fit some of the larger population communities. Not exactly true. Sometimes, a good example over in Dodge, Compass Behavioral Health, there's a way you can actually focus in and do limited projects or focused projects. So even though we look at CDBG sometimes as small community projects like water, sewer, gutter, things like that, there's also things like actually building, buildings for targeted programs where we can actually go in and survey the low to moderate income beneficiaries of that project. So, sometimes even though we put CDBG in there and we think it doesn't apply, it really does apply, just depends on the program. I told you about the, the big sheet that has all the different funds that are available. You might have heard some of the new programs that have come out, like the Grow Kansas Funds that, that just came through. We're actually administering those statewide, or we're helping with those if they happen to come up. There's also a list of all the projects in the middle there, in the middle of your binder that shows all the different projects we've been doing over the years. I just wanted to, as I close out here, draw your attention. There's a data portal that we helped put together statewide that is really cool. You can actually pull down this corner of the earth, our corner out here, and you can actually get a lot of good informational data that is current, live, and it's the same data that the state legislature uses for all their, their decisions. So, know that that's there too. Lastly, I don't want you to forget that you do have an appointment to the Great Plains membership, and if you look, it's Dan Fankhauser, and we're hoping you might consider Dan for another year, not the least of which is because he's Great Plains President of our Board of Directors. So, we really appreciate that. If you would consider him as an appointee, that, that would be really great. And over the last couple of years, you have been fantastic supporting us financially. It helps because we're a 501(c)(3), and it really, it's voluntary on your part based on population. So the city and the county actually share, and we appreciate the county's contribution too. Your, as you heard a little bit earlier, our request would be voluntarily for 4050, $4,050, and that's half of the maximum that, that we actually set as a maximum. So, population drives it up. Thoughts, questions, comments? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Matt.
All right.
I will leave behind, if you would consider another year of support, I will leave behind something for the clerk, and something for the mayor too.
All right. All right. So, we need to take action on this. I believe?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the request from Great Plains Development for membership and participation in the amount of $4,050.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Bob, would it be helpful to just hand this back to you signed now before you head back to Dodge?
The extra one, extra one's mine if you want. Sign it.
You want to sign that there? There you go. You're welcome. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, See you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Item I, 12I. The governing body is asked to receive a recommendation from the Community Health Advisory Board regarding mental health, first aid. Danielle?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The, at the last several Community Health Advisory Board meetings, the advisory board has been talking a lot about mental health. And so they really took the perspective at the last meeting to really focus on mental health as it relates to first responders, and out of that conversation, they wanted to pursue having all of the board members go through mental health first aid through LivWell to get a better understanding of kind of what that looks like in our community. And out of that conversation, they wanted to pursue having all of the board members go through mental health first aid through LivWell to get a better understanding of kind of what that looks like in our community. As part of that conversation, they also wanted to make sure that they were able to invite you all to participate in that training if you were so interested. So we're still working with LivWell Fannie County to get that date identified, but it will likely be late October or November when that training will actually take place. So we wanted to bring that recommendation before you formally. We will likely use the meetings of note area in your agenda to make note of when that training actually is, but I wanted to make sure to relay that invite to you and make sure that you saw kind of that formal request of you all to, your invitation and welcome to participate in that training when it shows up. So with that, there are two alternatives. One is to receive the recommendation from the board. Like I said, we'll add that to the meetings of note. Alternative two is to take no action. Staff recommends alternative one, and there is no fiscal impact related to this item.
I move to receive the recommendation from the board and add the training dates to the meetings of note once identified.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Danielle.
Item J, the governing body is asked to consider and approve four appointments to the Building Safety Board of Appeals.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioners, maybe my last item today, we'll see. So the Building Safety Board of Appeals is a seven-member board. It's made up of a licensed master plumber, master electrician, master mechanical, one residential contractor, one commercial contractor, one architect, and one member-at-large or at-large citizen. Currently, the board has four member, open member positions. The licensed architect position is vacant, and the licensed master mechanical, licensed commercial contractor, and licensed residential contractor terms have also expired. Desiree Miller has expressed interest in filling the vacant licensed architect term expiring December 31st, 2021, or 2022. Attached is her application. We have David Gurman has expressed interest in serving a second term representing the licensed residential contractor. The term is a three-year term set to expire 12/31/2024. Sam McMillan, the licensed mechanical, licensed master mechanical, and Matt Lee, licensed commercial contractor, terms expired December 31st of 2021. Both members have exceeded the allowable term limit, and both have expressed interest in seeking a waiver to serve an additional term that will expire December 31st, 2024. There has not been any interest from the public for these member positions. Alternatives, number one, the governing body may appoint Desiree Miller to the licensed architect term, approve Dave Gurman for the second term, and grant waivers, and approve Sam McMillan and Matt Lee for additional term. The governing, number two, the governing body may leave vacancies or vacancy or vacancies and solicit interest in serving on the Building Safety Board of Appeals. Staff recommendation is alternative number one. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
I'll make the motion to point Desiree Miller to the licensed architect term, approve David Gurman for a second term, and grant the waivers, and approve Sam McMillan and Matt Lee for an additional term.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
With that, I think we're ready for the consent agenda, item K. If approved, it would be items K-1 through 5.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, K-1 through 5.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Concludes the business items, Mayor. I think we're ready for commission reports.
All right. Commissioner Ortiz.
Okay. Yeah, first of all, thanks to all of the firemen out there and the police department out there, just kind of keeping everything safe on the streets. I know there is a lot going on with school started, and I think all of it's kind of been ironed out, so appreciate their work out there, especially with them being at the schools and just, you know, saying hi or good morning to those kids each day, staying with those. Especially, my, my wife works at KH, so, I mean, I get to kind of run into those kids all the time, too, and it's fun to see those interactions with, you know, the kids and the police officers or firemen and stuff. So appreciate those, those out there doing that. So also, big events that happened this last coming week, also with football starting, sports. There's been a lot going on, so I'm not going to mention all of them, but I'd just like to extend the appreciation out to the teachers, to those coaches, to the trainers, staff here at the city for their work on everything that they're doing for us with the agenda packets and all of their work that's been put into there. This was a big packet today, so appreciate the read for the weekend, plus sports, plus, plus, plus. So that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wheeler?
Thanks, Matt, for the pre-meeting today. It was very nice and great to be able to go through the goals and see the progress that you and the staff have put together and done towards that. So I just want to thank everybody for all of that, because I know it's above and beyond, but you guys really do pull it together and make it work for all of us. I was pleased to see all of the progress at the airport and on Mary Street and then Third Street. I have an up-close and personal with that, since I live right on Third, and it's been fun to watch and, you know, learn a little bit about the process, I guess, but it looks good. It looks really, really good. I also enjoy driving by the art installation on A Street, and it was kind of fun to see the forms set up today and see some progress there, but then also the mural is looking amazing, and every time I see it, I just get more excited every single time. So, I mean, we'll have to take a picture in front of that when it's all do, or done. I just think it looks great, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Enner?
So I just want to, I hope everyone had a restful and family-filled Labor Day. So, I mean, it came and went very quickly. It felt like, it felt like you had all this time, and then, of course, Tuesday comes. So hopefully everyone was back to work and feeling rested. I also just want to thank again for, Matt and the staff, for all the work on the strategic goals. That's pretty impressive, and I've never seen it so far, I mean, in this early in the year, so I'm excited about that. If you have, if you remember driving down West Merritt and you felt like you were going to lose the bottom of your car, you better be careful, because now when you drive, if you are not careful when you come to the railroad tracks, you're going to get a big surprise, so. Drove down that and was, I mean, so smooth, just really nice. But they've done a really great job on that section and also on Merritt, on Third Street. So that's really neat. The only other thing I want to bring up, and something maybe for future discussion, you know, I know that we have lots of areas in our city that we water grass that no one ever walks on. I'm thinking mainly on Kansas Avenue where there's that big island in between there. So I'm wondering, I've noticed as I walk around town, a lot of people have been turning things into rock and mulch or a combination of. So I'm wondering if in our effort to conserve water, if that might be some areas where we could maybe use, utilize that rather than, you know, continuing to water grass. I know this year, most of our lawns have taken a beating, and they've not, ours has not come out really well. But just so if there's any effort, I know that water conservation is going to continue to be something that we're going to need to make sure that we take care of. So as the city's part, if there's something, and I know the buffer zones, you know, I mean, the safest sidewalks feel like when they have that buffer zone between, you know, the sidewalk and the street. But if that can also maybe be encouraged into mulch or maybe rock rather than, you know, planting grass where you have to do some type of irrigation. Any sidewalk is appreciated, so I really appreciate our focus on sidewalks in Garden City. They make dog walking, people walking, you know, family walking so much safer. So anything that we can do to encourage the use of sidewalks or encourage additional sidewalks would be great. Other than that, just thank you for, like I said, a great meeting today.
Great. Commissioner Sesna?
I have no report.
Thank you. All right. Well, I'd like to thank the state of Topeka for making sure that we know what mill rates are and how we can implement our own money. Like Commissioner Ortiz said, sports, starting football, but not just that. I mean, all the activities, scouts are starting, robotics is starting, everything. So thanks to all the people who make that possible, all the volunteers to make it possible for our kids to have the rich environment and all the options that they have. So thank you for that. And then I just want to point out, Community Mexican Fiesta is coming up this Saturday, and then also Fall Fest a week after that, two really important weekends for Garden City. And with that, I believe we are done for today. Thank you.